Thank you and good morning to everyone. We're going to get started now. Before we begin the council session today, I would like to make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Mike Passau's team to make this remote meeting possible. Instruction for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, The Inquirer, and the Legal Intelligence of prior to the meeting and can also be found on councilphl.com. And I'll note that the hour has come. The clerk will call the roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and the viewing public in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom?
Morning, Council President, colleagues, viewing public, and thank you, Reverend.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gottié?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the viewing public. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gim?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Prayer goes out to all the families who have lost loved ones. The census gun bounce.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. I am president.
Good morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present as well.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and to the viewing public.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kino Nisantias?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. I'm present.
Good morning.
Council President Clark?
And good morning to you all. Thank you for joining us today. We have established a quorum, so council will now come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes the Reverend Father Roman Patula of the Ukrainian Catholic Metropolitan Cathedral of the Immaculate Conception. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Dom. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation. Reverend Father, please proceed.
Almighty God, we thank you for all your blessings you bestow upon us. We thank you for all gathered here at this assembly as we seek to do our work for the benefit of our fellow Americans and residents of the great city of Philadelphia. We thank you for our lives and for the lives of our citizens. We thank you for all your civil authorities, our mayor, city officials of the various levels, and this assembled council. We thank you for freedom and peace which we cherish on our American soil. And we pray for peace around the world and especially for the people in Ukraine as they suffer during this horrific war. In the Holy Scripture, you say that all authorities come from you, oh Lord, as the main supreme sovereign. Therefore, by accepting our authority, grant us to productively conduct our work with a spirit of delight and eagerness. We ask for your guidance to show us how to fulfill our duties in the best way possible to provide our service to those whom we are called to serve. Give us your wisdom, oh Lord, to overcome all obstacles we may face during our work and bless us with the desire to find solutions to successfully resolve the issues and to assist to those in needs. We ask you to open our minds and our hearts to the needs of all who may seek our help in economic, social, humanitarian, or other matters. The Holy Scripture also says that fellow citizens ought to comply with the governing authorities. Therefore, grant us understanding of our congregated responsibilities and obligations to be promoters of peace and order within our communities. At these times, many are affected by different calamities and misfortunes. We hope to receive a helping hand from those who are able and willing to help. May we be challenged and encouraged to reach out to them and to provide needed assistance and support. We attest that there are endless needs that can and ought to be addressed. There is a need to see and sense the welfare and true needs of our people. We need to see the compassion for elderly and lonely. They need to look at our youth and their future. There is extreme thirst for justice and acceptance. There is a need to work in harmony and agreement. There is a need to respect human life and dignity. We see the need to bring back peace into our homes and our hearts. We may see and confirm that there are lots of issues and concerns that are currently present and surround us. And we are not to look at these issues as obstacles, but as opportunities. Opportunities to work and find solutions. We are to put all our efforts under your great leadership and guidance, oh Lord. And we will be firm and strong in fulfilling our tasks that you have put on our shoulders. Direct our thoughts, words, and actions toward the right path and help us to intelligently evaluate our options. Help us to be united in making the best possible resolutions and to effectively carry them out to let our contribution be productive and fruitful. Almighty Lord, we bow down our heads before you and ask for your blessings for us to be faithful to our obligations and to open and to hear and see the needs of others whom we serve. Amen. Thank you and God bless you.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend. We appreciate your spiritual guidance and your invocation this morning. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2022. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2022, be approved?
Second.
Thank you. It is moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 5, 2022. Stand and approve, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, I have it, and our journal is approved. And the next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you. Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Councilman Johnson, did you need to be recognized now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I have to take care of business inside the district and want to be voted aye on all bills and resolutions today.
Okay, and the leave shall be granted. Let the record reflect that Councilman Johnson is voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker. For motion concerning certain legislative matters, they may arise during today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking a substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matter stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, motion is approved. And our next order of business is communications. I would ask the clerk to please read any messages that he may have from the mayor or any other communications in his possession.
From the mayor and the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia. I am pleased to advise you that on May 9, 2022, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on April 28, 2022. And then on May 9, 2022, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on May 5, 2022, Bill Number 220291. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the rebuild project statement for fiscal years 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023 pursuant to Bill Number 170206. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to accommodate the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development of all or a portion of a certain parcel of land in and about the area bounded by Wharton, 12th, Reed, and 11 Streets for further conveyance. And an ordinance submitting Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Waging Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates. And an ordinance submitting Section 191301 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to increase the amount of homestead exclusion. And an ordinance submitting Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owners/Owner Occupants of Residential Properties to revise the cap on the total amount of exemptions authorized in the program, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes messages from the mayor and communication. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. A wide way of a reminder, we ask that all resolutions, including privilege resolution, be placed on the final passes calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comments. I would like to thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Councilwoman Parker offers five bills and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council. An amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the creation of the Division of Jobs and Training Opportunities within the Department of Commerce.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance submitting Title 18 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commerce by adding a new chapter entitled Workforce Development Activity and Reporting to promote workforce development activity and to require the Department of Commerce to report to council certain aggregate information, providing employment rates and training opportunities in the report on assessments of the economic impact of the city's workforce development programs.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance submitting Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Waging Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance submitting Section 191301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion to increase the amount of the homestead exclusion.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance submitting Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties to revise the cap on the total amount of exemptions authorized in the program.
Verdict Committee?
Also, on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to create the Division of Jobs and Training Opportunities within the Department of Commerce to provide centralized services to Philadelphians seeking jobs and training opportunities in the public or private sectors.
Verdict Committee?
And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to examine the economic impact of COVID-19, of the COVID-19 pandemic on professional services, specifically barber shops and beauty salons to assess the impact of the Saber Grants administered by the Commerce Department and to explore the creation of a new specialized grant program for barber shops and beauty salons.
Is that request for hearing, Mr. Decker?
It is, Mr. President.
Yes, today's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing May 14, 2022, as Letter Carriers Food Collection Day in the city of Philadelphia in honor of their annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. Mr. President, Councilwoman Parker would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this resolution introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. And I, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to allow passage today on this resolution, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that will be on today's final passage calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one bill entitled, an ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain landscaping requirements and provisions and making related technical changes.
Verdict Committee?
Councilwoman Gim offers one bill and two resolutions. Entitled, an ordinance submitting Section 8-703.2 of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Special Certificate of Inspection to include satisfaction of certain plumbing facilities and fixture requirements as means of certifying compliance with certain water quality requirements for issuance of special certificates of inspection.
Verdict Committee?
And a resolution honoring 12 of Philadelphia's emerging Asian-American leaders. Lan Din, Chi Sir Trang, Neo Mik Hi Ja, Dr. Esther Hi Yo Tang Castillo, Stephanie Sung, Anne Oh Shee Yi, Jenny Nam, Shre Mom Sak, Sin Tu Storms, T Lam, Shi Lu Madali, and Mai Weintraub for their deep commitment to empowering their communities and their work in fighting for food sovereignty, dismantling barriers in social services, expanding economic opportunity and justice, investing in community-based arts, advancing representation in sports, and protecting civil rights on the occasion of Asian-American and Pacific Islander history.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring Philadelphia-born author, podcaster, cultural critic, media trailblazer, and Peabody Award winner Phil Yu, founder of Angry Asian Man, a destination website on Asian-American pop culture, politics, sports, and more, and co-author of the New York Times Bestseller Rise: A Pop History of Asian-American America From the '90s to Now.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers two bills and one resolution. Entitled, an ordinance submitting Chapter 10100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Animals to revise certain provisions relating to the ownership of chickens, roosters, and hens and making technical changes.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising Section 14303 Subparagraph 11A entitled Registered Community Organizations by establishing a fund to be used by registered community organizations to obtain legal representation for hearings and appeals before the zoning board of adjustments.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, for your indulgence. I want to briefly talk about some of the difficulties some of our community organizations are having trying to shape the direction of development in their respective communities. All too often, we set up a David and Goliath scenario where big development uses its power, its might, to hire attorneys to stifle the input of many of our registered community organizations. Too often, they can't, their arms legally are too short to box with the big companies and are drained of necessary resources trying to provide legal representation are often sued by developers when they pursue their inputs to the ZBA. One of the bills that is being considered is to have more community organizations on the zoning board of adjustment authored by our president, Darrell Clark. But a companion piece is to level the playing field so that registered community organizations can have their input not be obstructionist, but to be partners in the developments in the communities in which they live. So thank you for this council's consideration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. That issue came up consistently during the course of the conversation about the zoning board. Well, thank you. That will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Jones also offers a resolution celebrating Joel Embiid as MVP Most Valuable Philadelphian.
That will be on next week's calendar. Let's just hope that he's still playing next week, next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and two resolutions. Entitled, an ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and technical changes.
Verdict Committee?
And a resolution also naming the 1500 block of Lombard Street Wesley Way to honor the historic Wesley AME Zion Church.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution urging the United States Congress to pass Judiciary Act of 2021, to restore the integrity of the United States Supreme Court by adding four new seats.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Green offers three resolutions. Entitled, a resolution calling upon the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass House Bill 140, the Parking Protected Bike Lane and Plaza Bill to empower municipalities to buffer bike lanes with parking on state roads.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution recognizing May 15 through 2022 as the inaugural Multicultural Media Professionals Week in the city of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I believe I need to be recognized after the next question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Decker, proceed.
And a resolution approving Philadelphia's election as the participant city and the municipalities reimagining community safety initiatives.
Chair now recognizes Councilman Green.
No, it's not after this resolution. It's the other, the final resolution.
All right. Go ahead.
There is no other resolution, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. No need to be recognized, Council President.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
Councilwoman Gottié offers two bills and one resolution. Entitled, an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to acquire a fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest from the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by 56th Street, Lindberg Boulevard, 61st Street, Pacey Yonk Avenue, and the Spookel River.
Verdict Committee?
And an ordinance submitting Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize bicycle lanes on Lindberg Boulevard between 58th Street and 65th Street.
Verdict Committee?
And a resolution designating May 15, 2022, the inaugural day of serenity in the city of Philadelphia, providing communities disproportionately impacted by gun violence the opportunity to gather in peace and healing.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution. It's entitled, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings addressing the findings of the Enough is Enough Students, PIE, Against Gun Violence Campaigns Survey, which aims to address the experiences of Philadelphia high school students surrounding gun violence in the city.
This week's calendar?
Councilman O'Neil offers one bill entitled, an ordinance submitting Chapter 192900 of Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low Income Special Tax Provisions by extending the deadline for low-income seniors to apply for a refund of forgiveness of real estate taxes.
Verdict Committee?
Councilman Scola offers one bill entitled, an ordinance submitting Section 191303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Discounts and Additions to Tax by tolling additions, interest, and penalties on real estate tax when the assessed value of property is under appeal and limiting tax payments due based on certain assessments under appeal.
Verdict Committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution entitled, a resolution urging the School District of Philadelphia to enhance its maternity leave program.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers one resolution entitled, a resolution honoring the life and legacy of the Honorable Norman Mineta, who passed away on May 3, 2022 during Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions today. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I'm sorry. Sorry, I got a little off track. Our next order of business is reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for reporting the Committee on Public Safety. Councilman, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Safety reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Safety, to which is referred Bill Number 210802 entitled, an ordinance submitting Section 121120 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Abandoned Vehicles to authorize public safety officers to authorize the removal of abandoned vehicles, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading of this bill number 210802. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yes, has been moved and probably seconded that the rules of council be suspended. So as a remit, first reading this day of bill number 210802, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. This bill will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning the resolutions and on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. They are resolution numbers 220385, 220386, 220388, 220389, 220390, 220391, 220392, 220393, 220394, 220397, 220398, 220399, 220400, and 220401.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions that are on a regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers two two zero three nine five, two two zero three nine six, two one zero six eight five A, two two zero one eight six, and two two zero two six one. All of the bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, before we proceed with the consideration um of the calendar, uh, we will have a public conversation, so we'll take a couple of minutes uh to connect our speakers we have for today's meeting. Thank you very much, and we are back. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comments as follows. Public comment must concern matters on a second reading and final passage calendar for possible action at accessory council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call two one five six eight six three four oh six by three P M. the day before the session to sign up for the public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and we'll add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Uh, today, uh, we will have three minutes uh to speak, um, but however, based on the volume uh from time to time, we may have to adjust that timeframe. Uh, in order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I tend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So, once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout the testimony, and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Uh, once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Uh, we also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitions comments are being made on the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for a public comment at a meeting. Uh, please be aware that this is a public meeting, and it is being recorded, and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So, by continuing to be in a meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. Um, I would thank you very much for your participation uh in this public forum. Um, Mr. Decker, uh, would you please call the first name on the list for our pu- public comment session today? You're you're on mute, Mr. Decker.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. The only speaker we have for today is Tiffany Green commenting on two two zero three nine one.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, Tiffany Green. I'm opposing Resolution Bill two two zero three nine one. Uh, we recently found out about this bill being up for uh passage, and we had sent a letter to Councilman Johnson asking him to remove or withdraw this because the fourteen city properties uh being disposed for to the land bank. The land bank hearing was put on hold on Tuesday, and so we wanted to have discussion because we do not support this because this, again, this is fourteen houses going up for a hundred and ninety-five thousand workforce development to market rate housing. We don't know the price for market rate housing, and again, we have not gotten the low-cost uh home ownership, portable home ownership for low-income families. But what I have a concern about, and I'm and I feel it's very disingenuous, that the fact that Councilwoman Parker stated that there was no leave of absence and that Council President Clark had to add, let, notify Council President uh, uh, Council uh Johnson that he had a leave of absence today because we wanted to build pool. We just found about it, found out about it, and we asked this morning to have it withdrawn. I'm saying all that to say at this point, this is very disingenuous, disingenuous, and I and this goes to the thousand properties uh that you claim you're going to use for workforce development. Point Breeze was one of the test sites, we believe now, for workforce development. Workforce development was a new name they put on it. Actually, this is low-market rate housing. When you move into night one ninety-five to two hundred and thirty thousand range, you do a kick, a jump start, and when these houses were built in Point Breeze, we found that market rate developers were coming in and around the area and starting to build houses at four and five hundred thousand dollars. This is a jump start kick, and this is not fair, especially based on the fact that uh the city is coming out with two thousand and three tax assessment and raised everybody tax assessment. These houses need, the thousand houses need to be at least a hundred and sixty thousand or below because we have a lot of low-income, moderate-income, cost-burdened families out here who are only being paid fifteen dollars an hour or less, and we need to address that. The city has had thousands of market rate houses already built in this community, and this is not fair to take a thousand and still want to put in that two hundred thousand dollar level. When you go to two hundred thousand dollar level, you're telling the private market that these neighborhoods are up and coming, and it's not fair to us. Basically, we feel at this point that Point Breeze has been used as some type of guinea pig, and at this point, we feel that this is city-sponsored gentrification when you take and use workforce development housing and fuse it into poor black neighborhoods, and then want to say that at this point, this is some type of affordable house. It is not. It is lower market rate, and at this is not fair to us, and we feel that this is way that majority black city council, is this your way of answering the question that is not fair and protecting our residents in the community who have supported you, voters and constituents? We cannot continue no longer go down this road because this gentrification is really heating up, and what I'm personally upset about, after all my years of advocacy, to see a developer at thirteen thirty-two South Twenty-third Street uh list a house for six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. I say to you, Council President, I say to you, Council President Clark, I just want to ask you one question. How are you going to address the housing prices that are increasing in our neighborhood? Not the taxes, the housing prices at six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars? Please, I ask you to vote no to this resolution and allow us to have a conversation with the land bank for low-affordable housing in our area. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, we appreciate uh your concern about um what's going on in a number of neighborhoods. Uh, we are addressing those issues, and you will see over the next year uh significant amount of affordable house being built uh in a significant strategy to address um those individuals who want to own a home and want to build wealth uh by virtue of homeownership. Uh, but I appreciate your continued uh advocacy for those individuals, and we will be uh addressing those issues very shortly.
There are no other speakers.
Is that it?
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate it. Um, that concludes our public comment for today, and we will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of all resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately be removed from the resolution consent agenda and be placed on today's regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, will you please now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda?
Resolution number two two zero three eight five entitled the resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of various properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District, including on the following streets Monument Street, West Side and M Street, and North Thirty-first Street. And Resolution number two two zero three eight six entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three eight eight entitled a resolution honoring twelve of Philadelphia's trailblazing Asian-American leaders Lily Ye, Aisha Khan, Ali Zakir, and Najneem Kabita, Ur Chu, Pastor Aldo Shuhan, Anna Perm, Nancy Nguyen, Su Ming Ye, Chef Chris Cho, Wei Chen, and Lee Quinn Bu, for their transformative work in building community, expanding educational opportunity, preserving culture and the arts, investing in youth leadership, and upholding civil rights on the occasion of Asian-American and Pacific Islander History Month.
Good.
And Resolution number two two zero three eight nine entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to three thousand nine Wharton Street, fifteen fifty-four South Dover Street, sixty fifty-two King Sessing Avenue, sixty fifty King Sessing Avenue, nineteen twenty-six South Sixtieth Street, and sixty thirty-two Chester Avenue in the Second Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three nine zero entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to twenty-six twenty-eight Titan Street and twenty-six thirty Titan Street in the Second Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three nine one entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds deeds conveying fee simple title to nineteen hundred through oh two Point Breeze Avenue and twenty-one eleven Seigel Street in the Second Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three nine two entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of twelve ten, twelve twelve, and twelve fourteen South Twenty-seventh Street, twenty-seven twenty-three, twenty-seven twenty-five, twenty-seven twenty-seven, twenty-seven twenty-nine, twenty-seven thirty-one, twenty-seven thirty-three, twenty-seven thirty-five, twenty-seven thirty-seven, and twenty-seven thirty-nine Ingram Street, twenty-seven oh four, twenty-seven oh six, twenty-seven ten, twenty twenty-seven twelve, twenty-seven sixteen, twenty-seven twenty, twenty-seven twenty-four, twenty-seven twenty-six, twenty-seven thirty-eight, and twenty-seven forty Manthon Street, twenty-seven oh five and twenty-seven twenty Oakford Street located in the Second Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three nine three entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of fifteen forty-three South Dover Street, fifteen forty-five, fifteen forty-seven, fifteen forty-nine, fifteen fifty-one, fifteen fifty-three, fifteen fifty-four, fifteen fifty-five, and fifteen fifty-five South Dover Street, fifteen forty through fifty-four South Myrtlewood Street, and fifteen forty-six South Thirtieth Street located in the Second Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three nine four entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District. And Resolution number two two zero three nine seven entitled a resolution honoring the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Education, Justice, and Parent and Care Caregiver Advocacy Organization, the Philadelphia Home and School Council, which continues its long legacy of establishing diverse and representative home and school associations, sponsoring workshops to train advocates, and empowering marginalized school communities by giving Philadelphians voice and power in their in the decisions that shape their children's schooling. And Resolution number two two zero three nine eight entitled a resolution renaming the four thousand block of Filbert Street L C Wise Way to honor the life and legacy of L C Wise, civic leader and founder of the West Paladin Steppers and Drum Team. And Resolution number two two zero three nine nine entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Champions of the Week, Newman Guretti High School's Girls Basketball Team on their successful two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two season and winning the two thousand twenty-two P I double A Girls Basketball Three A Championship Title. And Resolution number two two zero four zero zero entitled a resolution proclaiming May two thousand twenty-two as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia to pay tribute to the rich history and significant contributions made by generations of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders in our country, state, and city. And Resolution number two two zero four zero one entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring the Settlement Music School on the occasion of its one hundred fourteenth anniversary, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved second that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. We will now consider bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two two zero three ninety-five.
A resolution recognizing and congratulating Barbara Sizel for her years of dedicated, vital, and transformative leadership as Executive Director of the Philadelphia Cultural Fund.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'm joined in this resolution by other members of this body that serve on the Cultural Fund, Councilmembers Bass, Scola, and O, uh, to really congratulate Barbara for her leadership uh to Philadelphia Cultural Fund. Um, unfortunately, um, every year, um, the Cultural Fund has had a battle to do the work that they do, provide resources to the so many grassroots, community-based organizations um that are really providing vital funding and opportunities for people in neighborhoods all around the City of Philadelphia, uh, which has really been impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And they've done that in spite of some of the challenges they've had in the dollars that have not been allocated to the Cultural Fund, um, but she has provided real leadership uh in bringing people together to make sure that we provide a robust arts and culture community in the City of Philadelphia. I commend Barbara for her years of leadership and stewardship of the Philadelphia Cultural Fund in spite of the global nineteen pandemic and the dance that we do every year in the budget process where council has to step up, provide more dollars back into the budget process to make sure that those grassroots, community-based organizations around the City of Philadelphia have the resources they need to operate in order to make sure we have a more vibrant life in the City of Philadelphia, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two two zero three ninety-six.
A resolution honoring the life, work, and accomplishments of Shakita Gaines, whose years of service as President of the Philadelphia Home and School Council has immeasurably shaped parent and family engagement in public schools, set a precedent for how to incorporate social justice values in positions of leadership, and established a clear expectation for how public schools should educate, inspire, and empower students and families in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to the Resolution number two two zero three nine six.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to the resolution number two-two-zero-three-ninety-six. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second that the amendment to resolution number two-two-zero-three-ninety-six be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that the resolution as amended be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two-one-zero-six-eight-five-A.
An ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title Four, the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code of the Philadelphia Code, by amending Section A seven-oh-three entitled Special Certificate of Inspection to enhance building safety requirements for educational occupancies.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green for an amendment to bill number two-one-zero-six-eight-five-A.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to bill number two-one-zero-six-eight-five-A. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
And all those in favor of the motion were signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and bill number two-one-zero-six-eight-five-A has been amended. Bill number two-one-zero-six-eight-five-A as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two-two-zero-one-eighty-six.
An ordinance amending Chapter twenty-one eleven-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Community Development by adding new provisions related to workforce housing programs, amending the applicability period, and making other technical changes.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-two-zero-two-sixty-one.
An ordinance amending Section twenty-one-on-one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Residence Requirements by clarifying that temporary residence outside the city, including for military service or educational purposes, does not prevent a person, including a police recruit, from meeting the residence requirement.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinona Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
I do, Mr. President. A resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings to examine the economic impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic on professional services, specifically barber shops and beauty salons, to assess the impact of the SABR grants administered by the Commerce Department, and to explore the creation of a new specialized grant program for barber shops and beauty salons introduced today by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, as Letter Carriers Food Collection Day in the city of Philadelphia in honor of their annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive introduced today by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings addressing the findings of the Enough is Enough Students Against Gun Violence Campaign Survey, which aims to address the experiences of Philadelphia high school students surrounding gun violence in the city, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passes calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today, and we will now move to our speeches on behalf of the minority. And none speeches on behalf of the majority.
I have a speech on behalf of the minority, Council President.
So that's why I, Council President, but Councilmember O was first.
Sorry, Councilman.
No problem. We're still in the minority, Council President.
Good minority, though, you know? There's minority, then there's a good minority. You are the good minority. Council chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I've been on council, I think, ten years. I think so. And every year, it's been a mystery to me how we arrive at our assessments. Sometimes it's not that big a deal, and other times it's a huge deal. I remember when our city went to like ten percent increase of assessments. That was pretty shocking. Some homes went up two hundred percent. It was hard to explain because we looked block by block at identical houses on the same block, the identical land, and the assessments were so very different in unexplained ways. Bigger homes were lower assessments, smaller homes, larger assessments, homes that were assessed way beyond what they appeared they were worth, other homes that were purchased at very high sale prices were assessed lower than the sale price on the same block. I actually published a picture of two homes next to each other, both assessed at like a hundred thousand dollars. And then the following year, one assessment went down and the other assessment went up to like three hundred thousand dollars. Nobody's going to pay for these homes for three hundred thousand dollars. No way. They're not in a location, a geographic location, where that would make sense. They're right next to each other. They're rather rundown. There's no amenities like a great school district. You know, there's high crime, all that type of stuff. It does not make sense. I believe as people receive their assessments and for a whole bunch of other people, when they get their tax bill, they're going to start looking at the other houses on their block and find incredible differences, unbelievable differences. You know, we did an audit, council did, and the audit came back that the methodology was below industry standard. O P A says they did a R F P, got someone to do an audit, and now they're above industry standard. I find that to be very difficult to accept. I think it would be a third party in a system of checks and balances like city council that would authorize an audit, and if the audit came back, it was above industry standard, okay? That's something that I could accept. At this point in time, I have no confidence in this process. I find it to be a continuing problem. And I will say that I am drafting a letter to the city controller. I am asking her to examine this process, to look at how O P A arrived at its at its values. The methodology is one thing, but what's the actual process? What is the evidence? I want to see the math. I want to see the paperwork that shows what this is. It is astounding that when we look at the rates of increase, it is the poorest neighborhoods, the most crime-ridden neighborhoods that have some of the highest increases in values, over fifty percent. Now, the median household income in this city is about forty thousand dollars, but in many of our neighborhoods, people are not making thirty or even twenty-five. And to double their taxes, it's a huge amount. And it is incumbent on the Office of Property Assessment to come and show and prove that these assessments are accurate. I hear from them assessments which to me are based on the idea that certain people will pay a maximum rate for a home, but that's not everybody. And that cannot be used universally. If someone is going to benefit from living in that house, then they are willing to pay more than that house is worth. But that house is only worth a certain amount because it has to be universal to anybody. It's not just to some people who will benefit because of the job they have or the status they have. It has to be that that is the actual value of the property. I will finally say that I intend to introduce a bill, and I certainly encourage my colleagues to consider, you know, the same or working together. But I think this is such a critical issue that it's not something that we could just adjust some of the loop and some other things. It only help a certain number of people. I think that the result of this assessment is going to drive people out of their homes, and that's not something we want to do. But I look at my own neighborhood where where we're in the second highest assessment increase, not even the first highest. I mean, we're talking about North Philly. We're talking about these locations for the highest, but within Southwest Philly, some of the blocks are up almost ninety percent. Ninety percent. And they don't have great schools. They have murder. They have a high crime. People can't come out of their homes. They don't have any amenities. They have dumping. They have all kinds of problems. I live right there. And while I can afford to pay twice my real estate taxes, they cannot. That is a huge percentage of their annual income, annual income. It would have to be proven to me that this is the actual value of the home that someone will actually give them three hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars for their house because I wouldn't pay for it. I don't know who would. What I do think is that when they go into sheriff sale, someone will purchase that home for a lot less than that, put a lot of money into it, and sell it for a million dollars. And that's not what assessment should be. I don't know what is going to happen here, but I just want to let the administration know and the city know this is completely unacceptable. I don't believe it. I have no confidence in it. I tremendously doubt it. And I think for the sake of our residents, we're going to have to fight this thing. We're going to have to, in my opinion, just my opinion, really lower lower the tax rate to offset the damage that this assessment is going to do to families and vulnerable people and seniors and single mothers and people trying to recover from this pandemic. We're really going to have to lower this tax rate to offset the tremendous harm. And talk about the increase in gun violence, frustration, domestic abuse, drug addiction, every bad thing that is going to harm this city is going to come from the resulting taxes. And if our goal is to just replace our citizens with wealthy people, this is a good way to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Before I call on Councilwoman Brooks, I just want to make one correction. I guess I was anticipating next week's election where we would, after which we would have a full complement of council members. I have referred to the vote count as seventeen-zero. We are still at sixteen-zero. Shortly, we will be at seventeen-zero after the next week's municipal election. Just for the record. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to take a brief moment to thank my council colleagues for their support on the two resolutions that passed today, recognizing the life and work of Shakita Gaines as well as the one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of Philadelphia Home and School Council. As someone who came out of education organizing, I know firsthand how essential home and school associations can be in forced fostering parent engagement, empowering school communities, and giving families a voice in their children's education. This is especially important in communities that have for generations been harmed, toxic schools, overpolicing, overfunding, privatization, and lack of consideration in the decisions that shape their students' lives. And I know firsthand that Shakita is a force to be reckoned with in fighting back against these harmful systems to ensure parents have a seat at the table. Her commitment to Philly students and families and to the principles of social justice are unparalleled, and her work is left a permanent mark on Philadelphia school communities. And at a time when integrity of school curriculum is being attacked across the country, and at a time when school closures once again threaten to destabilize our marginalized communities, we have, we are fortunate to have people like Shakita and institutions like Philadelphia Home and School Councils advocating for the best interests of our young people, their families, and our school. So thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Keep up the good work. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right now, I'm thinking of great names of people like Georgie Woods, T. Dolores Tucker, Bill Gray, David Cohen, other people who came before us and raised the issue of voter participation. I remember one hero who has a mural up on Germantown Avenue, and nine out of ten kids who walk by couldn't even tell you who he was. And for those who don't know, Google him. But what I remember him telling me as a younger person, he said, "Voting is not enough." Voter participation without voter education is like giving the keys to someone without giving them driving lessons. I don't care what party you're from. I don't care what philosophy you are. Do, but I don't. But I want you to participate this Tuesday in the electoral process. I would only remind you I would only remind you of what if. What if you didn't? And what kind of budget discussions, colleagues, will we be having right now? Had we not gotten relief from the federal government. U S Senate, U S Congress to come to rescue our city. We would be, we 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 argue enough when we have a surplus. When we have a deficit, it is a life and death struggle for many. I say to you. That you don't have to look backwards. You can look forward. To the fact that we are actually having a conversation about. Women's reproductive rights right now. Voter participation without voter education is like giving the keys. To someone who does not know how to drive. I encourage you to listen to W U R D. To listen to K Y W, to read the paper cover to cover. To make your determination, oh, oh, listen to city council. Because we we offer some positive public policy. But make decisions about people you want to represent you this Tuesday. I I say that because every vote does count. If you start looking at how this country is split. And how divisive the issues are. It's not, it's it's very little gray area. It's black and white and people are rigidly. Tied to their doctrines. So if you care about something, vote about something. Tuesday is election day. Um, please come out and participate. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. P H L council dot com. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues for um. Their commentary this morning, all very important in reference to um this assessment issue that we're looking at. As well as voting and also the great work citizens in our city do. Uh, like Miss Miss Shakita Gaines in reference to education. Uh, and as we are going through this budget process um here in city council. And I was uh in a meeting earlier this week before our budget hearing. Uh, many of my colleagues know I served as president of the Pennsylvania Municipal League. So as past president, I still am a member of the executive committee. And so we had a representative. From the governor's office on our call. And I was asking about the state budget process because we're going. Going through our process and we know we're debating all the issues that have been talked about this morning and have been talked about. On the past number of weeks and also in our budget hearings. And I was reflecting on uh conversations I've had with Senator Hughes over the past couple of weekends about. How much surplus we have at the state level. And each. Time I run at Senator Hughes, that number is getting higher and higher and higher. And we're trying to grapple with our over five billion dollar general fund budget. And I keep hearing the numbers in Harrisburg higher and higher. And higher, to the point they put a record amount of money into the rainy day fund, which is now like two point eight billion dollars. So I asked um representative from Governor Wolf's office, um, you know. What is going to happen in the budget process and what's the current dollars in our our budget? And to learn that in April, and she provided a link um that in April. Uh, the Commonwealth. Of Pennsylvania in our general fund brought in six point five billion dollars. Which is one point eight billion or about thirty-nine percent overestimate. And this is the most tax revenue ever collected in the history of the Commonwealth in a single month. The fiscal year-to-date general fund collections is totaling forty-one billion dollars. Which is four point five billion or twelve percent overestimate. And so as we're having these conversations in our local budget process. And knowing that the rainy day funds and also the American Rescue Plane dollars that have been allocated must be spent by twenty twenty-four. It makes you think about all the challenges we have as a city. Because the American Rescue Plane dollars are our dollars too. That comes from our tax dollars as citizens in City of Philadelphia, as elected officials, as small business owners. And when we look at all the challenges we're having in our city in reference to issues that we need to fund. And you know, we're fighting to put money back into the cultural fund or other groups. And we have such a record number of dollars at the state level. I mean, that's our dollars. That's not coming back to the city of Philadelphia. And if we don't have a strong city, we don't have a strong region, we don't have a strong Commonwealth. And so we've got to make sure we do all that we can. To support our fellow members of the General Assembly to get our dollars back here to the city of Philadelphia. Now, we know we have got a real struggling uh infrastructure, especially in reference to schools. Um, this afternoon at four P M, uh, and some members of council are part of our fund, our facilities coalition. Will be joining Senator Hughes at four P M at Francis Scott Key School, um, which is twenty-two thirty South A Street. Now, this school was built in eighteen eighty-nine. That's a hundred and thirty-three years ago. And we've got record surpluses at the state level. But we can't get the resources needed to make sure that every child in the city of Philadelphia has a great education. And what's really interesting is that in our state constitution, and this is part of that legislation and debate. And lawsuit that's going on in the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. Under the Pennsylvania Constitution, it's responsibility of the General Assembly. Provide a thorough and efficient system of public education to benefit all the citizens of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So here we have crumbling school buildings, but we have a surplus in the Commonwealth. And what's being put in unallocated resource. I don't know what unallocated resource is. I've never seen that at the local level because every dollar that we get, we allocate because we know we've got this amount of need and this amount of resources. But I guess that's that's what happening at the state level. So we need to con- continue to encourage our colleagues. Especially those who are up for election uh on Tuesday or members of the General Assembly. To make sure that we are doing all that we can locally. But at the same time, pushing Harrisburg to bring back our dollars. So we don't have schools that are hundred and thirty-three years old providing education. To citizens in the city of Philadelphia. So I look forward to um the press conference this afternoon under Senator Hughes. Uh, or sometimes we'll say Reverend Hughes will make sure he'll lead us. In in the in the march and the rally of how we've got to push forward and make sure that the members of the General Assembly. Understand that that's our money that should be coming back to our city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Sure, we'll see a part of the uh political playbook um after the summer session uh as it relates to the proposals. As to where that surplus will go, and I think you all know what I mean. It won't be going to. It won't be proposed to go to municipalities to help uh the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. Be a part of a corporate strategy. Anyway. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, and let me start by saying a huge uh thank you to both. Uh, council members, uh, Jones, uh, and Johnson. Um, relative to their comments regarding the importance of participating um in our upcoming uh election. And quite frankly, being educated about the who's uh and the what's extremely uh important. And thank you all for noting that for the record. Uh, I want to note that uh on this evening uh from six thirty to eight thirty P M. Um, I will have my first in-person um budget briefing and town hall meeting uh for the ninth councilmatic district. Um, for residents of Logan, Alney and East Oak Lane. Um, we will be at the York House Apartments of fifty-three twenty-five Old York Road. Uh, for your G P S, that's zip code one nine uh one four one. Uh, plethora of agencies. Um, we're gonna walk through um the entire budget uh as proposed. And uh hear from the people what they think about that process. Um, next, uh, uh, Mr. President, uh, on today at three o'clock, so we'll be running uh today. Um, I am uh proud to note that at three o'clock, we will be on Wadsworth Avenue. Um, to announce pandemic recovery grants for black, brown and women-owned small businesses. I know Councilmember uh Squilla, who had been a very strong advocate. Um, particularly for those um neighborhood-based, commercial quarter-based businesses who. Uh, while they were trying to keep their businesses open, they had to deal with the cost of overhead, of paying those rents. You know, even though in some instances they weren't able to uh open uh because of the pandemic. So we'll do that today. At three o'clock in front of Uptown Hair Studio at fifteen nineteen uh Wadsworth Avenue. And that's the Comcast Rise uh program. Uh, next, Mr. President, and this one is a bittersweet for me. Yesterday, we were on uh our budget hearings, and I'd like to give a shout out to those agencies. And the people who we don't see but who help us. And I I didn't have my list of um our engine numbers. And um immediately, uh, a young gentleman by the name of Dylan Mahoney. Who just joined my team. He was texting that information to me. And Dylan is with us now handling uh zoning and all land use issues for the ninth councilmatic district. Um, because Hillary Emerson, uh, my longtime staff attorney who was with me since I was a member of the Pennsylvania House. Um, Mr. President, I'm trying to be diplomatic here, was poached by uh the zoning board. And while in one instance it's a good thing, her skill set, I mean, the way she did zoning and land use, she learned from the best. Marion Johnson, worked with her when we were in the state. So when she came here to city council, she already had some knowledge on it. Um, so Hillary, congratulations to you and your new role, but I really need to say a special thank you to Councilmember Johnson. And uh Chris Sample, when we were trying to figure out who we would get to fill her shoes. Um, we found out Dylan was going to be graduating from Temple University School of Law with his J D. And his graduation is next Thursday. I'm I'm really super proud of that. Um, and welcome uh Dylan to uh the ninth councilmatic district uh team. Um, that concludes my remarks, uh, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You handled that diplomatically, I must say. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Uh, I have brief remarks, but I just wanted to share with everything something I learned this week that I thought very enlightening. Uh, and then I'll bring it down to the Philadelphia level, but in twenty nineteen. The net income of the United States was one trillion dollars. This was before the pandemic. The pandemic hits in twenty twenty, the government gets involved and injects over four to five trillion dollars into our economy. The net income of the United States from twenty nineteen of one trillion to twenty twenty goes to two point five. Trillion dollars in net income. In twenty twenty-one, it goes back down to one point nine. In twenty twenty-two, they're forecasting anywhere from one point two to one point five trillion. And in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, they're forecasting it'll probably come back down to between one point one and one point. Uh, one trillion dollars, back to where it was in nineteen, maybe a little higher. And I say this in this context. I think we had an unusual last two years of inflation, very dramatic inflation. And that's because of the amount of money the government gave to individuals and businesses over that two-year period. Think about it, four to five trillion dollars was injected into this economy. It's huge. And in in everything that we're doing, we have to, I think, understand that situation. So now we bring it down to the Philadelphia level. In seven years, this budget of our city has gone up one point six billion. Seven years. And I can't sit here today and tell you that any, by any chance, that we think the city's safer now than seven years ago. That we think it's greener or cleaner or more efficient. And I think what our taxpayers really are demanding from us, besides that they're upset about the assessments. What they're demanding from us is they want to see that what they're paying for, they're getting in services. They don't feel that the value proposition is there. And I think we have to really understand that. These increases, maybe we should consider, as I've heard from some of my colleagues, adjusting the rates and providing all the supports. For those who can't afford it, making sure they can keep their homes. There's no way someone should lose their home over this. No way. So I'm bringing this up because I am a little concerned or a lot of concern about where we've been heading. And how we can become more efficient because people have choices today. And last year, as you know, Council President, I think we lost what, twenty-five thousand residents? We should be gaining twenty-five or thirty thousand residents. We should be losing. So I say this in in the light of caution. And I say this that I didn't realize four to five trillion dollars went into the economy. I didn't realize the net income of individuals went up a hundred fifty percent in one year. And some of these run-ups of real estate and other things were probably caused by those scenarios. And what's gonna happen when that money stops? What is that gonna do to values and cost of goods and services across the board? So just want us to be cautious of this and be aware of what's going on. We should probably. Conservatively look at what twenty nineteen numbers were and base our decisions off that because twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Are definitely inflated by the amount of money the federal government ejected into the system. Thank you, House President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I believe that concludes our speeches on the behalf of the minority and the majority today. And that being the case, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at ten A M. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second. The council stands adjourned until Thursday, May nineteen, twenty twenty-two, ten A M. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, I have it. And motion cash. Thank you all very much. Uh, please be safe out there. Love you guys.